Okay, we're live.
Good evening, everyone. We call this work session of the Mayor of Council, City of Elizabethtown, the Coachers, State of Arizona. It's being held on Tuesday, April fifteenth at five thirty-two P. M. in our council chamber. That will call, please.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill.
President.
Councilmember Pete Skinner.
President.
Councilmember Karen Schumacher.
You're.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Yeah.
Councilmember Leslie Johns is excused. Councilmember Mel Sweet.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Anna Klein.
Yes.
City staff, Stephen Pocken, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Joelle Landers, personnel director, Jim Richardson, fire chief, Joe Estes, city attorney.
So tonight, just outside of doing work sessions, I thought it would be a good idea to raise the power of the entire council. There's been some requests about what we could do with visitor center funding. There's been a couple of meetings with Sigmund Pocken, one or two I've been part of. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to you, sir, to get this started, and then we'll go from there. Steve, have you got something to say?
Not a whole lot, just introductory remarks. As far as the visitor center fund is concerned, I have had several meetings with interested parties over the last couple of months, one of which has a proposal that he wants to present to you this evening for a grant. And so essentially, the visitor center fund is a special fund that is only to be used for tourism activities. That's what the Arizona Revive Statute says. So interpretation of what allows to tourism, we have a little bit of discretion in terms of what that is, but it can't be blatantly not for tourism. It has to have a directive somehow. So we have, over the last few years, been up and down the visitor center fund because the primary down, of course, had to do with COVID. But we have, over the last few years, been recovering from COVID at a steady pace. There was a time, I want to call it twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two, where you did not have a functioning visitor center. And during a portion of that time, you were also not collecting the full five percent that you now collect. And quite frankly, that was about somebody dropping the ball that was supposed to go up on the ballot for renewal. It didn't get done, and so for a few years we lost that revenue, I want to say in the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen era. So we did go back to the ballot and did restore our bed tax that you go to five percent, and we've been collecting since that time. When I came back in twenty twenty-one, visitor center, a man, sorry to use that term, unpersonnel, whatever you want to call it. So actually, in twenty nineteen, we went about the task to hire somebody, and at that time, council's pleasure was to hire a physician called Tourism Director, okay, that had a higher salary levels than the visitor center manager, which is what we have, we've always had before. We recruited for an individual. That individual was persuaded for various reasons during his visit to the community not to take the job. I happened to be here with that recruitment as a temporary city manager. And by the time that all played out, we ended up without a city manager. My time was up. I went back into retirement. So when I came back in twenty twenty-one, there was still no visitor center personnel. We went about the task of recruiting again and hired the current visitor center manager, I believe it was in twenty twenty-two. And then later on, we hired an assistant who's now working there for the agency. So that's kind of the the short version of a long story. The visitor center budget, as you know, is a lot of what we spend on visitors, from the visitor center bed tax, is for advertising. We partner with the Arizona Office of Tourism for strategic advertising. They do all the brain damage officially on the published publications that they advertise and based on kind of returns they get on their investment. And then they offer us to decide from that list what publications we would like to interview in. And it's co-op system where if I spend fifty thousand dollars through AOT on advertising for the year, they will match it with another fifty thousand dollars. So essentially, we get two dollars for every dollar we spend if we're using the AOT co-op. There's some other advertising we do that is not in the co-op, but for various and sundry reasons, a demographic that we feel is strong coming to Bisbee and we want to go after. As you know, and I know you get told repeatedly, the Bisbee Visitor Center is a destination marketing organization. Simply what that means is the job of the Bisbee Visitor Center, the job of the city of Bisbee, through its visitor center, is to get people to come to Bisbee. And once they've come to town, if you want a grant for your business establishment, you need to do that marketing as a middle of the organization, whoever it is. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, what we spend visitor center money on. And I don't want to go into too much detail on this at this point, but I do want to throw in, since there's a request for money sitting here waiting to be made, we are based on direction from several conversations that I've had to you all. We have been looking at, we have purchased and are looking at the renovation of thirty Main Street for the purpose of standing up a visitor center in that high station. I've had conversation with a lot of people who have their business based on tourism. Some think it's, in fact, the majority think it's a fantastic idea. There's a few that think it's a horrible idea, okay? But that sounds about like how like this, right? And so following direction that I've received, we are in the process of getting a contractor. We've already approved to start cleaning out thirty Main Street for the purpose of renovating that money. And the bulk of that money is anticipated to come from the visitor center fund. So what we will see in the budget that Carrie just gave you to go home and have fun with is that's part of the plan that, based on your direction, we have, we are laying forward for you for meeting settled starting next. So that's about all I have there, unless there are any questions?
Questions?
We can ask question?
Sure.
No, just, I mean, thank you for that explanation, Steve. On the potential of using that thirty Main Street, would that be, the idea is not a bad idea, but my question, the money, will that be enough to get that going in your opinion, or will we have to look at other sources?
Well, what you're gonna get is what you have enough money to pay for. Now, can it fix the building, put it back under roof?
And maybe put a lot of it back door, sure.
So, and also, there has been some discussion about will there be public restrooms? Any suggestions?
But anyway, it's three hundred percent that we have on the service, the bed tax, right? That's what it's on to.
Well, right now, it's edging up towards four hundred thousand. We expect it to be four hundred thousand by the end of the next fiscal year.
Well, that's enough, that's enough to make that building usable?
I think it's enough to make it usable if we don't have to spend a bloody fortune on a bed tax. I'm missing Albert Hoppe right now.
Well, it's your second offer.
I'll, I'll.
Your deal.
It's not, it's only twenty-seven, I'd say, why, seventy-five could be. So if there isn't a lot of hidden something normal, that helps if it's coming out of nice conditions. You figure out price per square foot, I think it's good.
One of the things to be discussed was the potentiality of using some of the bed tax money to fix restaurants, in public restaurants that already exist, right?
Right. And I know you brought that to me, and I just will let you know that I checked into it, and apparently we have some money that was aside in art money.
Opera.
Opera money. And I think that's something we can discuss at the, at the budget session to see if we would make sure, we want to make sure those final funds are able to work what we want there. That would be the best she's doing.
Yeah, that was actually Grassy Park Restaurant and the War Park Restaurant were both in the original opera list. And since it hasn't been done yet, that funding is still there.
It's great news.
That's good.
So I think we can handle that one without.
Yeah, it's mine being a culprit for not getting it done.
So what we have is a situation where we have multiple people that want to do different things with this money, then.
That's what we're gonna hear from them. So first one, I don't have a signup list, but I guess the first one would be the one that Ashley gave me an application for, or packet. So give you some time to do that. You know, a lot of big time for everybody. So we'll give you twenty minutes, if possible. That would be great. All right?
All right. Thank you, council, for coming this evening.
Introduce yourself.
Yes. I'm Carrick Sears, and I am owner of the Carrick Hotel in town. Thank you all for coming this evening so we could talk about increasing special events here in Bisbee. A group of five lodging owners got together last year and started brainstorming some ideas. So I want to introduce a couple of my team members. We have Amy Niko, right here, and Sarah Popnow, right here, owners of also two other hotels in town. And five of us got together and started brainstorming ideas to help increase tourism here, as tourism is really the economic backbone of this town, and it provides a lot of employment opportunity and tax revenue. That's critical for the quality of life of all of the residents here in this town. So we decided that we wanted to be able to speak for the majority of the lodging owners here in town. And so we conducted a survey over the last four months and got results from lodging owners here in town. And one of the things that came back in the survey that was very clear was special events were a driver of tourism and especially lodging occupancy here in town. And the owners felt that having more events, especially in the slow season, would be a big benefit to our town. And so we have essentially, we are proposing to create what we're calling the Bisbee Special Events Economic Development Grant. And so we're calling that a C grant. And this is designed to increase the number of visitors, especially with events that are going to target our underperforming times of the year. So if I ask you to flip to page three here, you will see all the bar charts and special events, the top left corner, special events came back as number one for driving occupancy and tourism here in our town. And then on to the right, we have occupancies by month. And this was conducted by surveying our lodging owners and showed that the summer months are really the slowest, followed by January and December. And so the group felt that having more events during their slow season would be a big economic boost to our town and help create, helps have sustainable jobs, more of a sustainable year-round economy. So this grant would be administered by the Bisbee Accommodations Group to be put together, which is five individuals that all own lodging in our town. And these individuals have all graciously agreed to review submissions that would be done with an application. And they would make funding recommendations to the city council for final approval during the, during the regular current meetings. And then when approved, our, the group would follow up with the grantee and submit a report to the council detailing the success of the event, based on the overall impressions, occupancy levels, and attendance estimates. And all grant, all grant recipients would be required to submit an accounting of expenditures as part of their final event report. And on the second page where it says Part Two, Grant Administration, there would be an application process. So anyone would be able to apply, whether they're an individual or a nonprofit organization. If they're seeking funding, they would fill out the application. And what we've asked for is it's done four months in advance. And that gives us a couple weeks to review it, a couple of weeks to get into city council and get it approved. And then at that point, they would have ninety days left to finish planning their event and promote it and advertise it, so that there's ample time for people to come. Our group will meet as needed to review these applications and, of course, score them, and then make our recommendations to the council for these funding requests throughout the year. People would be able to receive funds from the city after the event occurs. We talked about giving out money before, and the group felt that some people might not use the money for their tenant purchases. The event might not actually be put on in cabin. And so as a reimbursement, they would have to make sure they put on the event and then show receipts for expenses, and then they would get reimbursed afterwards for this seed money that would help them produce an event. Essentially, it's to allow money for an event producer to come to town, if they're from out of town, put on an event here that they potentially put on somewhere else successfully, whether that's Prescott or Jerome or Phoenix or Tucson, and do an event here during our slow season. And to take a risk on Bisbee and give them some seed money to put on an event. It's also for people that are here in this community to put on more events in our slow season and try to boost our year-round tourism. And so the next page here, back to the graphs on guest bookings, it just shows a majority of people that come here are families and, or couples. And then we also have sixty-nine percent of our tourism is coming from the state of Arizona, thirty-one percent out of state. And then that's broken down below with the other two bar charts at the bottom furthermore. And then, of course, the following pages here are the application form. The different sections add up to a hundred points. And so the committee would be able to work unfairly score each application that comes in, and we make recommendations for funding. The grants, allotments, what we are asking for is that about ten percent of the reserves currently built up for tourism be allocated to this fund, this grant. So that would be thirty thousand dollars that we would look to administer throughout the year. And then the grant recipients would be able to receive anywhere from one thousand to ten thousand dollars, based on their request, demonstrated need, and filling out the budget, showing how they would utilize those funds to draw more people and more tourists into town, with the goal that once we have a successful event, that they would come back and put it on the next year, and it would become an annual tradition and help us to increase tourism here. With that, I'd like to open up for any questions that we might be able to answer.
Who'd like to start?
You can start.
All right. I guess one of my questions would be, if you found an event that is a for-profit event, why would the city be inclined to make money for, I can see a nonprofit, that's what Tucson does, but why a for-profit? They go off and they take all their money into town and we're done.
True.
And so I don't fully understand why this is open, we should, why can't we just open this to nonprofits for the money stays basically.
To see them. So, yeah, we didn't want to, we want, this was why we wanted to have a working session, so we could get that feedback. I think that's a great idea. And I think we support that, having a nonprofit.
The only other way it would work to me would be if this, this, I want to say, Visbee one thousand makes thirty, forty thousand dollars, then we ought to get a piece of it to the city. Sorry. Especially for funding the thing. So that's one of my issues with this. The second one is that, that, you know, we're at budget season right now, or so this would have to happen. You need four months ahead of time for them to apply. That would if somebody could apply right away, then you say, well, it would also go on through the next year. I mean, the way our budget season runs from June to June, I really can't make a memo on what next year's budget's going to be. Would have a changeover. Of people up there, I can't tie them to that certain budget. So, you know, that's, that's another issue, is how we're going to work out the year. You know, if you want this all for the full year, that extends over two budget seasons. So that makes an issue. I'm sure for our finance director, the only one I know that that happens in many times is the swimming pool. Sometimes we cross over a little bit, but it's a much smaller situation.
Sure. And that's actually one of the questions we want to bring up tonight for discussion. So thank you, Ken. My question is, when we get near June thirtieth, can accruals be made for grants that we have agreed to provide but that have not occurred and therefore the funds are not distributed? Can we do an accrual and an internal entry into the council system?
That would be a financial question. But, but, yeah.
I mean, technically, the answer is no. However, that's part of the planning process when we do budgets. For instance, with some of the grants that you all have been working with over the last three or four years, if it's a million dollar grant, and we only get the project half done for the end of the fiscal year, we simply, if the local government, on June thirtieth, at midnight, everything goes to zero. Okay? So that means we should have already budgeted the remaining amount into the next fiscal year if we intend to finish that grant or that project. So it's similar in concept to what you're talking about, except that's the mechanics of how it works. So essentially, in local government, the theory is, is that this group is going to adopt the budget, and then if an election intervenes, and a whole bunch of other people get elected that don't like what they were doing, then they're not forced to continue to do it beyond the fiscal year. So that just takes place. And that's part of our process.
Stay bandied so we have a balance, comes out even even. So that is an issue that comes up every year. How are we going to make it balanced? And, you know, that's, so to command into something that will build, know what you're going to be able to balance next year, that's an issue. But outside of that, that was a couple of quick questions I had. I'm sure something more will come up. And I want to open it up. It's a work session, so everybody gets the chance to.
Okay. Okay. She can go first.
No, no, you go first.
No, no. No. First of all, honor, thank you. Anybody that wants to participate and help in the city, the city council always likes the input. That means you care, and we appreciate this. But my question is, we have, we have already several events that we have throughout the year that already exist, the Pride, you know, all this. My question is, will these events be eligible for some of that money? Are we going to create a situation where this is only applies to new events and the existing events? Because my, you know, being out there, I hear this a lot. So my thought will be, when we do this, and then you have the one thousand and the Pride, and all, people come and say, well, we need some of that money who already have those events. And some of them are injured. For example, Pride is injured. So what do you know about this? It's not going to create some conflict. And so make sure it's.
So our group has had different thoughts on this, and there's certainly pros and cons for doing both. And, you know, I know when I spoke to Ken and Steve, the thinking was, you know, having it be new events might be easier to administer. But, you know, certainly if there's existing events that want to expand and turn a one-day music festival into a two- or three-day event, and create more prolonged tourism and more economic, more spending, more tax revenue, you know, that's certainly a benefit. So I'm really interested to hear from all of you what your thoughts are on that, because we see pros and cons of both ways, whether it's just new events or new and existing events. If they're made better and enhanced, marketed better, more, increase more of a draw, and potentially, you know, encouraged to go from a one-day event to a two- or three-day event. What are other people's thoughts on that?
I think some of those existing events might have a struggle adding an additional day or a couple days, depending on the case might be. Yeah. And I, and I also foresee some conflict between the new events, money being administered to new events, at the exclusion of the current crop of events that we have scattered throughout the whole year. Yeah, I'm wrapping my brain around this. I'm anxious to hear the comments of some of my colleagues, because there's part of this that, that I said, yeah, sounds okay. But there's part of it that just lands rough with me. Your data that you accumulated, for instance, guest bookings, was that data just from hotels?
On the bar charts?
Yeah, the bar charts. Did that include Airbnb's?
Though, that was a few Airbnb's and, but mostly hotels, hotel owners.
So, so it might not really be an accurate reflection of the visitors that are coming into town.
It.
And how does that jive, I wish we had somebody from the visitor center here. How does that jive with our visitor center statistics, if we even maintain those statistics?
Yes.
On the crop of visitors that come?
So in your budget for this fiscal year, there's a bar chart for the visitor center account, as they come into the Visbee Center. And it is slower in the summer, with March months over.
Oh, yes. It's definitely, and that's, that's, it's definitely slower. We, in the restaurant industry, we experience that slowness along with every other business in this town. All the businesses, to include the art galleries, all of them dipped during that period. So, yeah. What, what, sorry, whatever demographic you want to test, they're all going to look a lot like the summer, I think, and see bar chart that Carrick has provided you.
All the same.
All the same.
All of us, and our numbers.
Yeah, I'm sure this is a surprise to know.
Yeah.
Can I speak to what you were saying about how, like, new events and existing events, existing events versus new events?
If you'd like to go up and take Carrick's place.
How that might, you know, be administered. I think the main thing here, with anything, oh, I'm Sarah Popnow.
That's okay.
With anything, if we can show a consistent application process and a scoring matrix that is transparent, then we can show where we're waiting certain events in terms of, like, does your event happen in March, for instance? That might not weigh your event as high as somebody who's proposing or who has an existing event that takes place in June or August, when our occupancies are so much lower. As long as, I feel, as long as we can show, like, there's a consistent application process, there's a consistent scoring matrix, and those are public for people who are interested, then, you know, that's how you avoid having that conflict between events. Since we're looking for these things, and if your event provides these things, then it's going to score higher. And, you know, it makes the job of explaining why one event may get funded versus another event not to be funded, it makes it a little bit easier on those folks. So, you know, and I think the main thing is, we did in the summertime, and we need to find ways to address that yet.
Right.
And remedy it, because people from Tucson and Phoenix will come here in the summertime. If we promote ourselves and if we have events that draw them in, they will come. I mean, we have lots to offer folks in the summertime.
True. Well, I'm glad. Not a, not cold, or cold water on anything, but also, I just want, so the council's aware, so in, you're considering this, when thinking about different programs, is you've got the Arizona Constitutional Gift and Loan Clause issues, to where the city is prohibited from giving funds to private entities, even nonprofit entities. Typically, how that works is, we've done that before. You'll say, well, we've done that before. Those funds were COVID funds, federal funds, not general operating funds. But even, you are able to do some with general operating funds and city funds. But what the AG's office looks at, what the courts look at, is if those programs are programs that the city would have implemented, but were being subsidized or put on by other entities. So it's just something that has to be looked at when the overall specifics of any. So it's just something that has to be looked at when the overall specifics of any potential program that the council wants to. To consider is the implications of the the constitutional gift and loan clause on how those funds are extended.
I have a question about that. So I was looking at the, I had this spreadsheet, I need to answer, I still think it's helpful. But so, for instance, we at one point, we did give bed tax number to Chamber of Commerce, right? And let them run that, but. But but if they're not an official entity, can we legally give them money? Are you guys, are you official entity? I was curious if we could.
Right, and then one of the reasons why cities and municipalities do that with entities like. Chambers and stuff is because that is a function that a municipality would normally or could normally take on. So they're essentially, you know, for example, the the funds that are given to the the fee bank, you know. Those are, those are municipal functions that another entity, whether it's a profit or non-profit, is doing. That it providing a direct benefit to the municipality, because then the municipality is not spending. Its own resources or employees or time and and money doing those programs. But it's it's something that would have to be looked at for whatever the specific. It's just something to consider in in looking at this process is that we would have to look at to make sure that you're not just. Paying out money for a promoter to come in and and promote specific. Specific things, that's not to say that you can't engage and you can't bring in events.
Can be, in key.
It can be, I mean, it 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 would be a lot easier like we are, and if it's a, if it's an actual city sponsored event. As opposed to some group of people, they want to bring in this event, and they want the free city to subsidize out there. Because just tangentially, the 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 increase in tourism or sales tax from people coming to town. For that event isn't necessarily sufficient to overcome the gift and loan clause issue. Otherwise, we'd be able to pay and look and bribe. Uh, any type of entity or organization to come to town to put on events all the time and say. What benefits of the city is the is the sales tax rate, the the courts don't see that as the.
Have you had a chance to read this? I'm actually, I was just curious if your input on like things like that.
Well, what I would do is I would suggest we take all the information, gather all the information, and then when. Because this is just a work session, we can't take any action or any order. Gather all that information, and then look at the specific details and see how it could be tailored to meet the requirements of the gift and loan clause.
Can I follow up on that, Mayor? I just asking the question. How would that differ, or can we similar, can we do it similar to what we do with the art commission? Will the commission, we have to establish a commission similar to what the art. Yeah, yeah, would that, how would this differ?
Well, attorneys, we know, commission would be, it's a a commission, it's a committee of the city that's appointed members. They have to comply with the old meeting law, they have to have public meetings, agendas, uh, all those things that go, just like having a counseling. So, yeah, there there's differences between having the the arts commission, because that's. Specifically designated, and it is a city commission, and they are promoting specific things for. For the city. So.
Plus, they also raise their own money.
Right, and again, like I said, you know, some of the examples that we we've had where we've taken access or the funds and stuff. To help out local businesses and stuff, they, it's been determined that those aren't technically nonprofits, or non-profits, suppose. Those aren't technically covered under the gift and loan clause, because those were funds that we received from the federal government. So for the purpose of helping those those businesses and. And Mr. Schmier, if I could, just to go back to that commission idea. In addition to having to comply with all the same laws that you all have to, as a governing body. That would put a significant tamper on their ability to be, because you've already got twenty wards of commissions. And we have them scheduled quarterly, uh, everybody wants to meet every month, and they want to have work sessions in between. And there's an average of sixteen business days a month. So if we were to establish a commission under the same rules that all other wards of commissions are are are. Established, uh, they would only be able to be four times a year, so I don't know that that's a good model.
The only thing is, it seems like it would be more oversight in something like this, and that's no offense to you guys, but you know, it's just that. It just seems like there's some, even, you you're you're business owners, that's great, and you did, you did some amazing work, but it's. We don't, there's not as much control over, I I mean, I don't know how you guys are going to deal with the conflict of interest and things like that. Or a commission is more, has, you know, obviously more governance. So, and there's, there are deep concerns there, and I I'm also concerned about.
So much more that it might be unworkable.
But, um, the other thing, I mean, we're right next to budget, obviously, um, so you'd probably be the only one, but. I'm also asking concern about other business groups. Saying, why did they get to do this? We now want to put in our proposal, we want thirty grand too. And then we start this, like cookie jar bed tax thing, where it's like, and then it seems apparent, though I was unaware, the city also has a plan, it's pretty much money, so. I don't know, did you have any work session about the visitor center? I was like, here, maybe.
Yeah, your work here. That's what we were thinking forward, and I was getting the bill.
Okay, I mean, I know.
To be totally, to be totally blunt, to be totally open about it, okay, I was given my direction in an executive set. Which is why I have a call to.
Yeah, no, no, I I understand that, no, I just feel I'm unaware of, and just, it seems like I'm unaware of.
It was before you were reading.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, I would, I wish, I know that this is just wishing, but I wish that this had been a discussion about bed tax in general. Versus just this one thing, because it seems like there's other things.
Well, the the way we wrote this up for tonight's meeting is, this is new events. I I purposely didn't name his proposal in here so we could talk about. You can't.
Maybe something to move on is.
Yes, okay, so let's let's go back and allow allow one person to have the floor.
I know the floor.
Do you have any other questions?
I'm good, right now.
The the composition of the board that would determine whether to do any, what would that look like?
Well, the composition of our board right now is in your your package on the second page, uh, it's five lodging owners.
Uh, well, part part of me would think that because you're addressing tourism. Why would you include participation on that by other businesses? It's matter what the business.
Yeah, this this is the the bed tax, so so what we've done is gather the owners together where the bed tax is paid, point of sale, which are our points of lodging here in the city.
So, just to answer your question, and I'll forward this to you, this is, this is what we got from. Our book that's moving the housing study, so they've they've got occupancy. Where the whole year tells us when, what the occupancy rate, this is for Airbnb's, because we got a new question about Airbnb. So, I have all the information here on the daily rate, we have the number and volume month, and also. Like, um, the day and how many are out there, so on and so forth, so that that gives us a. Will give us more information as far as the other part of the of the of the occupancy and when our lowest, I think lowest part is on. And I just. I hate this.
I guess, I was just thinking of us hypotheticals, and so. One of them is, is that if you formed as a nonprofit or something, then you would have some guidelines, because what happens if somebody else in the community says. Well, I want to be on that board, and then you have a conflict, you know, that goes back to us. Is that something that you guys are thinking about, forming something a little bit more official?
Hi guys, I'm Amy Nye Hope, I think, um, I just wanted to circle back, we really wanted to bring this to you guys as like a starting point. Because I've been in two or three groups that have wanted to form some sort of chamber, or what are you doing? Um, with the money from all over town, um, and I think this group has brought something to the table. Um, that just has more form, and it's more of a proposition, right? So it's super flexible in all of these areas, and it is really complex, and we understand that. We don't want to exclude anybody, but most of the conversations we had, we sent these. Surveys to all Airbnb's, all hotels, but we know how hard it is for anyone to take a survey. But, um, just thinking about how do we bring in more events, increase occupancy, using the bed tax money? For example, I know in Tucson, like they have the the mermaid event, and the cost just to get the permit. On Fourth Avenue is crazy, so thinking about like, how can we tap into our networking of Southern Arizona and just open up this space? I think we're totally open to logistics, we're just here to put this on the table and say, we understand that we're we're not officially a committee or a commission. But here we are, and we're even trying to do some of the work for you, we don't want to bring you guys more work, so. Uh, we're just trying to step up and say, how do we get this rolling, because of someone who's got multiple businesses in town and has been here a few years? None of the groups stick, because we're not sure how to do this, so I think the conversation is more like, here's an idea, and how can we work with you guys to make this happen? To bring in more business, new new events, um, not exclude anybody, there's always going to be someone who's upset, right? But I think the current events in town fund themselves and make work, right, so how do you, how do we get something started? And I think that was our idea, do I have that right, Karen?
Okay, I'm sorry, then I would say that, we start budget next week, I mean, we start budget talks next week, I would just say that, in my opinion, it seems like. I think it's a great start, I would form something that's official, so we can have those, know those guidelines before we could throw on something like that. We have to know that you have a structure that's going to, you know, accommodate those questions, those issues before we. Unless you're just wanting to create a group just for this one thing, but I don't think that's it, right?
Our 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 primary goal is to get thirty thousand dollars allocated for special event grants. And if we need to work out the logistics of whether it's a commission or nonprofit, or exactly how it's administered. That's, you know, what we we'll we'll figure out very soon, but right now, the most important timing wise would be to have thirty thousand allocated. To the budget for grants.
So you guys are also open, around to the idea of like some sort of tourist commission?
We are, in fact, Mike and Judith.
Yeah, my name is Mike Adler, I'm on Legion Bar and Grill, and I've had an opportunity to meet with quite a few over the last couple of months about this very topic. And we have put together an ad hoc Bisbee Tourism Coalition. Basically, we just did some broad surveying to ask, you know, what's going on with Bisbee, where are we, what is Bisbee, et cetera, et cetera. So to your point, one of the topics is where is the structure, where is the organization? A Chamber of Commerce is a five oh one six C, it's a nonprofit, so as a Chamber of Commerce, using it as just a name, a concept. That affords it a well-established organized entity that can actually speak with or on behalf of its commerce. Restaurants, hotels, arts, galleries, you name it, and then as united, they can speak and advise. City Council, and City Council then has the latitude to actually speak with a well-organized unit. So whether it's the Bisbee Accommodation Group, which could be a subcategory of a Chamber of Commerce. Or it could be another organization, the bottom line is we need to bring some type of organized structure in a form either a five oh one three C or a five oh one six C. In doing so, that would allow the city attorney, the city manager, mayor and council to effectively have. Very legal conversations about, okay, how are you organized, how are you structured, where is your money going, et cetera, et cetera. In that kind of format, then that allows the Chamber of Commerce, based on the results of what happens with the city of Bisbee, to then allocate funds accordingly. So it doesn't put the city in a bad position where they're giving money to an individual organization that's just some. Fracture organization like we've seen in the past, because it happens all the time, everyone wants to throw an event, is your event organized? You would have the parking barriers, and you can go on and on of all the different things, and then it becomes this sort of unorganized mess. And that's what we're trying to arrange, we're trying to make some organization of structure.
So are are you the same group then?
No, no, we're not, we we.
Are you forming together?
We're trying to, we're trying, and I think as the young lady said, is that this is something that over the last couple of years has come to light. With the fact that Bisbee is now on the map, people are recognizing Bisbee, how can we take advantage of the potential for tourism? That will overall increase the community and benefit the community, and and one of the questions I want to address to you, Mayor, is that, you know, nonprofit or profit. The saying that we use is that rising tides lift all ships, so whether it's a profitable event or a nonprofit event. Either way, the city is still going to benefit, now how we track that is all another conversation, but I think the basic. Pretense is that if we can increase increase tourism by a lot of different mediums, be it special events. Uh, nonprofit, whatever, it's a win-win for the city. And as the young lady said, this is just an initial platform to try to pool our efforts, so. We only have one group, another group, another group, to try to bring it all under one roof. And so when Karen had spearheaded this about a year ago, we just started to put our own. Ideas and things together over the last about two months, of which Karen and his group is a part of. So and there's there's several other organizations or other groups that are out there as well. There could be, and I think you mentioned that again, how do we know that there won't be twelve next month? It it it, and and so then we run into that situation, is how do we organize this, how do we streamline this process, because. You guys only have so many hours in one day, instead of having twelve people belong to you, it filters through either. Karen's group or our group or whatever, and then the message is very succinctly clear. So I just had a couple of questions, if if I could. I I think the general consensus from us as owners, business owners. Um, we like to have a more cohesive effort of how we're going to rebrand Bisbee, how are we going to take advantage of the visitor center? Be it a new building on Main Street, or be using the existing funds, I think, and that's the whole purpose of this initial conversation, to get a collaborative effort. So that we're not going in fifty different directions, we've got a consensus, there there's always going to be some disagreement, I think there's. People that don't want the visitor center on Main Street, they think, you're out of your mind, they've got something up here on the hill, and there's others that are like, hey. So having these conversations with some good structures, some good organizations, some good analytical data. If we can be working together, mayor and council and commerce, that then creates a win-win for everyone. And and that really is, this is just one conversation of many that will follow, because it's very complicated. As you said, attorney, how do you take money from a city and give it to a a group? You know, there's tons of, there's all sorts of red tape with that, so we're we're trying our best amongst ourselves. To bring this all together, and we want to first present you guys, say, hey, do you guys agree with this? Do you feel there's a need for something like this, because if you guys are like, these guys are out of minds, you know, no, we're very happy how we're running things. Well, then that is, that's a whole nother conversation. So, anyone has any questions?
No, I just, I feel that a lot of these things are trying to start to manifest the actual problem, I'm not saying it's a bad, it's not a bad proposal, it's just that. It seems like, and it's in your proposal, that people are unhappy with how the visitor centers generate the money. So I I wish we could just address that at some point, instead of just the, I know that.
We can address, I mean, I can answer.
It's just, I know that's where these things are coming from a little bit, and so.
Yeah, yes and no, Karen, I mean, it it.
With it, I'm not talking, I mean, in their proposal, I'm not going to go over, but their proposal, it says, you know, it's, there's something in here about it.
Well, I think it, I think it's worthy of, which is the whole purpose of tonight, a work session, it's worthy of further discussion. With a representative from mayor and council or a council, to have a more in-depth conversation of. What is the expectation of the visitor center, what's the expectation of the funds? Are we doing everything we can for the betterment of the community? And 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 that's worthy of another conversation tonight, I've spoken with Heather Andrews and Janet many times, and it's like, they're not the punching bag. They're trying to do the very best that they can, you guys are trying to do the best they can. We as, we entrepreneurs have other ideas that we want to share with you, so there's some, there's some collaboration. That's that's really awesome, we're going to agree to. That's that's really all. And we're going to agree to disagree on some things, but this is the first step.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Do you see the 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 group that you've been spearheading, the tourism group?
Yes.
See that uh turning into a chamber, a formal chamber? I mean, personally, I'd love to see that.
I don't think to use the word chamber because everyone associates with, you know, it's a chamber, oh my God. But i- i- as a model, yes. The short answer is yeah, it's a well-organized structure. It's a very well-designed. It's proven, it works. I don't know if Bisbee is going to be receptive to the word Chamber of Commerce. Um, but there's certainly other ways we can put that together. But the basic structure is yes. I think the time is now, when this started about eight weeks ago, I didn't think to be any participants. We had one meeting, there were thirty-five people that showed up. Then we had another meeting two weeks later, there were thirty-five other people that we didn't even know. So we have, we have a directory, a directory right now of over seventy people. And that's mostly businesses. And we still feel there's probably another ten to twenty percent to add to that. So we're going to be inviting council, manager, everyone to come and listen to this because it's a collaborative effort. So yeah, the short answer is yeah, it's modeled off of a chamber. I I don't think there's any other way to be successful without having that basic kind of structure. Through the law, the differently galleys and liability and everything else that's involved. It's just the word chamber sometimes scares people because there was a chamber here. It didn't do well. It wasn't received very favorably and.
No.
You know, well, uh, that's just what, that's just what I heard. I wasn't here then, but.
So let me, let me.
There were good years.
There were not some good years.
Yes, so I, you know.
For the first five years and by seven years as a councilperson, I was the liaison for the change. And they didn't break it up for quite some time and as new money, new people came in and new ideas and it didn't, didn't evolve the way more people dropped away, dropped away. And soon the reserves went down, down, down until they had no reserves and and they dissolved. That's the way I I watched it slowly dissolve. Um, so.
Well, right now, you indicated that there's like four groups out, correct? Doing a similar.
Yeah.
And Karen's, Karen's this group right here, your group, you indicated there were two more.
There was a previous group, somebody sponsored by Freeport.
Freeport-Atmarant has something going on right now that Sally Monroga is working with. So yeah, the idea is, it seems that this is, there's some positive energy going. How do we pool all these different factions together for the betterment of the city? So and that's really the goal.
So I'm going to give you the floor for a second and then.
Same thing.
So just chirping up, you need to be recognized so that we don't cross talk.
Um, looking at everything that you're proposing, it is a lot of responsibility, I see here. And. We want to make sure.
You're in. Did you record it?
So I'm saying that this is a lot of responsibility. But when I moved here, the chamber was at going downhill. And I mean, we can have a lot of enthusiasm and it will level out and disappear. So uh, do we have a commitment to try to move forward to accomplish the objectives that you're trying to accomplish?
We we do. And that's why we've organized, we've put together this proposal and come to party this evening instead of this time to to talk about it because we are committed to moving the needle on tourism and Bisbee by doing the grants for special events.
Nate? Yeah, you're sure.
I guess my concern here is giving, giving money to um private business owners for unknown events. Um, we don't even know what what kind of event, if there will be an event. I mean, everything is so unknown and it does sound like this should be a chamber function. And um, yeah, we've had a chamber for a very, very long time and it worked very well. And because what we see all the time here is only businesses up in old Bisbee. But there are other areas that need to be included and they're never included. So I have an issue with that. The other issue I have is, not related to that, but the statement of Bisbee is now on the map. Sir, Bisbee's always been on the map.
Well, I think.
That's never, I'm just saying, it's always been on the map.
To comment on that.
Not only is it on the map, it's even more on the map with the amount of notoriety and publication it's got. So when I say it's on the map, it's actually increased from where it was many years ago. And that's not a dig to say it's not on the map. It's, it's now a destination place more so than it was five years ago and more than ten years ago.
Thanks for our visitor center director.
Yeah, this, yeah, this is not a a dig.
I I'd be funny.
And we're we're very appreciative of the visitor center. We're very appreciative for all of us. The whole purpose is not to be argumentative or to point fingers. The purpose of this is to say, is there a collaborative effort of how we can take it now, enhance what we have for the betterment of the community? And my comment is that Bisbee is on the map. It's always been on the map. It's been on the map since the nineteen hundreds. Okay, but where it is now with the type of businesses that are coming here and the type of culture that's coming, the city of Bisbee needs to recognize what's going on. And we need to have a more structured approach of how we're going to handle this increased tourism, how we're going to increase special events, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So no disrespect, but it's it's not a dig that they're on the map. It's where we are now as to where we were in the past. Correct?
So for my five minutes, when I'm in a city, my feelings, first, let's address a tourism board. To me, as the guy that's going to have to appoint those people, I can see a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of applications and then I'm going to have to pick what dynamic I think will work together or won't work together. I'm telling you, that's a, that's a monumental situation because as soon as I pick you and not you, well, then why did you pick them and not me? And it 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 could become, to be quite honest, a political nightmare for somebody that's in my position. That's my own personal problem with it, but.
Sure.
But but here's, here's the deal is, is a board, I don't think many of you understand exactly how they work, maybe, maybe not. It's, they meet four times a year. You can't talk among yourselves. So when you, because of the open meeting law, any more than two people get together, then it starts to become an issue. Emails start to circulate around and then there's open meeting law violations. Um, it's, it be, it's a very closed group. And to me, what I hear here is you've got this seventy people that want to be involved. Those seventy people to me need to get together and form some sort of of coercive, coercive group. I saw, I've talked to the mayor of Douglas and that's what they're doing down there. They're not, it's not, it's not a, a um associated with the chamber or whatever, but it's called their business group. And they're working hard now and and working with the city on how um they could support their their mission. Okay, so you come up with a mission. When I see this, I have, my first issue is this came to us tonight. And this is next year's budget. This is my weekend, starts Monday. I get this tonight, which is six days before, uh, and somehow we've been flushed all this out in six days plus deal with this. And and to be quite honest right now, I I can't be supportive of setting a bunch of money aside. While I don't have a really great feeling on this and still dealing with the budget, which is six days away. But I would be willing to to listen to a group that of all business people that want to come together. And if you find a um proposal that somebody wants to bring an event here and you rank it yourselves and decide this is something you would like to promote. See, see, the thing is, the way this grant system you presented is a, is a reimbursement grant. So in other words, whoever's going to do this event's got to have money in their pocket to start with, or else it wouldn't. This isn't seed money. This is money to reimburse them for money they already have. So where where that money comes from, I don't know, but but it would help them maybe not take it out so much out of their pocket and maybe then they make some profit. But those events should should just come to us as a parking facility use permit and and then ask for what you would like to to be included in that park permit, like weight fees, um, um, can we pay for something else to help promote a new event? I am not in favor of of supporting a lot of current events as or. Um, I think that they're, they're pretty well standing on their own. To me, there's always two types of events. There's the money-making event, which people put it in their pocket, that motorcycle event, that V one thousand, even though it's a nonprofit. Um, some other ones that turn a, turn a pretty good um ability to make the money to actually put the event on and put and have somebody to sign. And then there's events that are community oriented, okay? A lot of those are what we as a city already sponsor, like the Fourth of July. We try to sponsor the coaster, coaster races. We try to supply the mucking and and drilling. And and other ones that are, we feel like strictly community oriented, whether the Fourth of July, great. And so those are two total separate animals in my estimation. And we try to do as much for our residents and we feel that, I feel that that, that we support that as much as we do the other. My my final thing I want to bring up to to the business owners is is thirty thousand dollars of bed tax. Do you know how many rooms that takes to make thirty thousand dollars? Because that's, that's at five percent. So take that and work it back mathematically. That's hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars of rooms.
Okay.
Okay, so when you say it's going to bring all this money to, it doesn't going to bring any money to our business, to our visitor center budget. It's going to bring five percent of whatever you guys are all charging. And and when that all comes down, it would, it would take years and years to make up that thirty thousand dollar regarding put out. So just think about it in in my estimation of dollars and cents that that when I put out the money, I don't, I, it's not going to come back at all in the same return. Now, there will be some sales backs involved with the Riley meals and stuff. But again, that's only, that's only a three and a half percent, okay? That's, so think of how many meals and how much other stuff they're going to have to buy to make up that money at three and a half to two. So so it does help my businesses and that's what I want to do. Okay, I'm not putting that down, but to try to justify, we should be putting out all this money because we're going to get all this back. Just doesn't, I'm sorry, it doesn't work. It 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 helps the whole city and helps our our business people and helps us keep alive and a and a happening community, which I want to do. So that's the reason I want to do it, not because I think that would be some return to the city money and when I have to do the budget. So those are, those are my my situations right now. I think we could move forward myself. I I'm glad to move forward with, if you all can can kind of coalesce around some sort of um group and and then we can meet up and we can see what we can do and bring us a proposal of, okay. Um, I mean, even if I have an idea of one or two events that are, that are in the, in the folder right now, ready to bubble up and we can do that, that would be so much better to to deal with this. Like, oh, well, we have this person that wants to do this and but if it had some seed money, it would really help. Right now, this is just finding a spot and it's very hard to move forward. Look, I found out. All right. Um.
Really? Uh, now, I was going to say, I mean, it may be a moot point anyway, right? Because with this given loan situation, the attorney said voted. I didn't agree with lawyers that if you had a group that had bylaws and addressed conflict of interest and things, it would be a democratically elected group of people within the, within the chamber or something, some system to add or subtract people from that group, that would be feel a lot more comfortable with something like this. But we don't even know if we could even, and also it's a bit of a moot point because that money is drafted at the moment to do a different project. Yeah, it is.
If anything can change.
It can change, but I would feel a lot more comfortable if it was already a formed entity by some group.
Uh, just one thing that Ken is that we do have over seventy people. We now have an elected board of eight members. So we're not just having seventy people, you know, go around. So we are actively going down the lines, carrying up what you said, and Pete and and Ken. And we will be tapping into you guys for, you know, how you would like to have it organized, if it's anything different from a chamber. Because that really sets the bar for the organization that's needed to then have these next conversations.
Needs to be more oversight.
Yeah, no, we, we, and that's the whole purpose of 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 a chamber or that type of a structure. And and that's where we're going with this. So just want to throw that into you.
As far as, as far as budget goes, we have that surplus and we can always put a placeholder to spend the surplus. But but doesn't necessarily mean that we might have money left over if the building goes, if we could go that way. We might not, we may have whatever, but I, right now, it's a pretty fluid situation. Um, we're way behind on that, trying to let ARV on this and.
I think we're having a lot of the the same conversations that you guys are having. Um, I understand what you're saying, Ken, about community events versus versus profit events. But I will tell you right now that the most money, as shown in your diagrams, that pay for my property taxes and the ability to give you guys money and fork out thousands of dollars in taxes is from the Prowl and the Bisbee one thousand. So I think I've met in multiple groups and we all want to have someone to go to speak to you and to prove this to you. Um, we love the visitor center. In fact, um, Janet and Heather have given the hotel some amazing pamphlets and things. But as a business owner, I'm then forking out thousands of dollars to advertise just my space um, and to try to get events when we could be doing this as a community, because Bisbee is growing. Um, I actually wanted to help out at the visitor center when I moved to town. A lot of us have been on boards, um, executive boards, taken minute notes. I know almost all five of us have, which is why we're here. So please don't make any assumptions because we're trying to do this the way that you want us to do it and we have all the proof and all the numbers. But to Mike's point and Karen's point, we don't know how to do it. And we're watching you guys have all this money in account that we would love to help to to see where it's going and know, know where it's going, because it's a, it's a lot of money, right? Um, and I think it's just important to say, how can we have those conversations? Because the community events don't, don't bring money especially to the head tax, even having a shop in the gulch. Um, parades, community events, the mucking, they're wonderful. They don't bring more cash back to the city in the way that bringing people in does. And I think um, we have, we have a lot more numbers, a lot more data. We love the visitor center. But exactly what you're saying, Ken, we're having those same conversations just in a separate room and trying to organize a meet with you all. And I think we're, we're a little frustrated by that because this is just an idea, right? Like, we don't expect to do it today. We just want to start having a conversation. Um, because me and Sarah have been in a handful of groups trying to do what you're saying, Ken, how do we get everybody talking and having conversations? Um, how do we move that forward? Because you guys would be.
I I have the one from Tucson. It's almost, it's very common. It's, you just took out the nonprofit part and.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, can I have a moment? You guys, because I know we're going to be looking at another video real quick.
Yeah, yes.
Um, um, just to summarize my thoughts a little bit, um, and first a little bit of background. Um, in my career, I've worked in five different cities in three different states. Um, every single community I've ever worked in had an active work in Chamber of Commerce. I don't care what the name is, okay? They weren't always called the Chamber of Commerce, but that's what they were, okay? I know we like to be different. I know we like to be unique and we should be unique. Um, but there are some tried and true principles under which uh things will always work more often than they don't. Um, um, Joel, what's my anniversary date?
April fifteenth.
April fifteenth, huh, look at the date. So four years ago, um, mayor council asked me to come back. Um, within two weeks, I had my first conversation, because I got, I went to the wrong place. I went to an old uh Legion um post downtown and walked in and the gaps in the floorboards probably still destroyed.
Yeah.
Thank you, because that was a little scary. And that was when I first met Mike and and before I got out of there, we were talking about how do we organize a business group? And 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 Mike and I just talked about this not long ago. It remembers a conversation. Um, but the bottom line was, you know, from my experience, what I told him I thought would work the best is to get a business group that represented, first of all, the entire community, okay, not just old Bisbee. Um, and that was formed under the.
Um, and that was formed under the premise that they were going to do positive things for the community. Eric and I had that same conversation a little later on, uh, about a year ago. Um, and that, um, the goal could be common without having to be a subset of one another, okay? Um, if 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 I've learned anything in my lifetime, because I've been in private business as well as being um, uh, in in public sector, um, private business works pretty well if it organizes itself and and can work together. Um, I have been fortunate to see that happen every place that I've ever worked. Now, we've had up and down years with the Bisbee Chamber of Commerce and eventually it dissolved. Uh, but you know, it was missing one magic ingredient that I think led to a solemn downfall. Uh, and that's that it really wasn't charging people to the law. And they were working off of a nest egg that somebody had presented to them over a period of time. Well, you know what happens to nest eggs over a period? Um, they hatch and they move away from home. Um, so eventually, uh, and and, you know, I'm just going to say, for most of the years that I was here the first time, uh, we had a pretty active working, uh, involved Chamber of Commerce. And I enjoyed participating in a lot of their events. Um, so if I had a preference for a model, okay? It would be something like that, okay? Where everybody is part of the same organization. Everybody, you know, we, we are, okay, we're still the city, okay? Uh, but we act together on doing things that promote business in the community. Primarily that promotion comes through our main vehicle and that's the visitor center. Although, um, as I think I mentioned, I mentioned to you, I'm here in my office last week. Um, the, when I was up in Winslow, we had a monthly meeting uh, of the Chamber of Commerce at the ungodly hour of seven AM. And um, and and I went to all those meetings and I was able not only to interact with people on a one-to-one personal basis, um, but I was also expected to give a little bit of an update on what's going on uh, with city projects and that sort of thing. So, um, so like, Mike, I told you this four years ago. Uh, we've been talking over the last year about, about similar things. That's kind of, if if I had my preference, I don't, I don't even get to vote, okay? Um, I would like to see that after come to fruition and move us all forward together. And uh, whoever these other couple of groups are that uh, that Karen brought up earlier and me, we'd like to bring them to the table as well. So and then we can talk about money. Okay? That's all I have.
All right. I think we're getting close to any other closing statements from anyone? Um, just rest assured, I appreciate this uh, time and presentation. Uh, I know I do, that's why I wanted to have this. So that we all, if we have to do this in public, we can't talk about ourselves without it. So I think it's a good, a good situation to do so. Uh, just to let the rest of you know, I'm emailing or just emailing Ashley to forward this information about the short-term rentals to you. So you say the, the trends and prices and so on. I know they're, and then we receive um, free, for the first back or a lot to pay for if you want to get it. We won't, well, we get this one, so I'll, I'll keep it as a free. Anyway, um, without any further than, uh, we'll take a five-minute or whatever break we have until seven for the regular session. Let's have, we're less than fifteen minutes.